Good evening. This, the 92nd meeting of the 71st term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Going to ask anyone that have cellphones to please turn them off or put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Anthony R. Fleggins of the Court of Christ. After the invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father in Jesus' name we thank you for the opportunity and the willingness to serve and to lead your people and uphold the fabric of all that is good in our city. Today as a brother father, I pray for the spirit of might, that you give all of us strength as representatives, the strength to lead, to manage, to govern in adverse situations, galvanize all of our minds as leaders so we can lead with the spirit of humility and of peace and with stability. Father, I pray that you strengthen our hearts till our hearts become full of your love. Strengthen our bodies, Father, during these hard times, so we can effectively work on the day-to-day process as men and women of council. At times when we are weak, Father, I pray that we learn to lean and rely on your strength, realizing that your strength is made perfect in our weakness. Finally, Father, I ask for protection, that you protect us, Father, while we're working, protection of our family, our neighbors, and our friends. We declare nothing broken and nothing missing. God, I pray let your word be in our hearts, your will for our lives, and your promise on all our children. God, we know that you love us, and we thank you for hearing every prayer. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Craft, Scott Curran, Henry Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Welsh, Riceinger, Stokes, Branch, Clark. Mr. President, we request.
Thank you. Today's showcase Baltimore presentation is Nicole Brown of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Inc., Baltimore Metropolitan Alumni Chapter. Delta Sigma Theta is a sorority that uses their principle of purpose, service, leadership, empowerment, sisterhood, scholarship, and service to impact citizens of all ages throughout Baltimore. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon to the Baltimore City Council members. My name is Nicole Brown, and for Showcase Baltimore tonight, I will be highlighting my chapter, the Baltimore Metropolitan Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, where our chapter president is Joanne Otis. I would like to give you some brief history about Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. We were founded on January 13th, 1913, on a campus of Howard University by 22 collegiate women. Today, we are a sisterhood of over 225,000 college-educated women with over 950 chapters around the world. The sorority operates underneath their five-point programmatic thrusts, which includes areas in economic development, education, international awareness and involvement, physical and mental health, political awareness and involvement. The Baltimore Metropolitan Alumni Chapter was chartered on March 1st, 1987. We currently service the Baltimore metropolitan area, and our public service committees are Arts and Letters, Economic Development, Education, International Awareness and Involvement, Physical and Mental Health, Scholarship, Social and Political Awareness. The Baltimore Metropolitan Alumni Chapter is very involved in the Baltimore city community. We have hosted Affordable Care Act forums for our Metro Delta Head Start family members and students of Morgan State universities. We have hosted a community health fair at the Avenue Market, where we've done blood pressure testing, handed out information on healthcare, free school supplies, and also voter registration and education drives. Today, we hosted Delta Day at City Hall, where we discuss topics that are affecting our citizens in the community. We are part of a pilot program for little free libraries, where we will be building book houses for the Metro Delta Head Start Centers and the Matthew Henson Elementary School. We currently have a partnership with the Matthew A. Henson Elementary School. We participate in the March of Doms Walk and Breast Cancer Awareness Walk. We award scholarships to college seniors, to high school seniors. We host voter education and registration drives, and we also have youth mentoring programs. Tonight, I would like to highlight for you two of our community involvement activities. We hosted a Rules of Engagement Summit, and we're also a partner with the Matthew Henson Elementary School. Our Rules of Engagement Summit was hosted on Saturday, February 21st, 2015, and the purpose of this summit was to provide vital information to young men about interacting with police officers and to educate them on the criminal justice system and how not to become a part of it. For this summit, we partnered with the Men of Iodified Theta Fraternity Incorporated and the Men of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated. Our summit panelists included former state's attorney Patricia Jessamy, defense attorney Warren Brown, Baltimore City Police Officer Charles Lee, and Baltimore County Police Officers. We had over 65 young men in attendance, and their parents did accompany them. The Baltimore Metropolitan Alumni Chapter has, is a partner with the Matthew A. Henson Elementary School, and with this partnership, we have assisted with providing lesson plans that will teach the students how to advocate for themselves. We have participated in their Thanksgiving food drives for families in need. We have hosted ice cream socials for perfect attendance students. We have provided non-perishable food items to the Matthew A. Henson Food Pantry, which is currently operating at three days a week. We have also participated in a paper and toiletry drive after the recent riots here in Baltimore, Maryland. So ladies and gentlemen, as you can see, the Baltimore Metropolitan Alumni Chapter is very involved in the Baltimore city community. If you would like more information on our chapter, you may visit us online at www.bmacdst.org, or you may follow us on Facebook at Baltimore Metropolitan Alumni Chapter. Thank you for your time.
And thank you, and thank you for all the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority is doing to change the lives of our young people. It is the council custom to generalize the invocation. I ask for a motion to generalize the prayer. Motion by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of generalizing the prayer, say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. We'll now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the Proceedings from the May 11 City Council Meeting is on the council member's desk.
There's a motion to approve the journal. Motion by Councilman Craft, second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of adopting the journal, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion incurred, the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on pages two to four of the agenda. Bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill 15-0537, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Police Department, $16 million. Ordinance for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of $16 million to the Police Department Service 622 Police Patrol to provide funding for additional operating expenses due to the new contract with the Fraternal Order of Police and to overtime expenditures that included targeted crime reduction initiatives and providing for special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriation Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0538, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Transportation, $6.5 million. Ordinance for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of $6.5 million to the Department of Transportation Service 688 Snow and Ice Control to provide funding for additional operating expenses incurred for the response to winter weather events and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0539, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Miscellaneous General Expenses, $20 million. Ordinance for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of $20 million to the Miscellaneous General Expenses Service 122 Miscellaneous General to provide funding for the response to the events of the recent civil unrest, which included heightened police presence, fire suppression, waste removal cleanup, sheltering, extended hours of operation of city facilities, and mutual aid from other government agencies and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriation Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0540, Social Host Regulation, Neighborhood Nuances and Unruly Social Events. Ordinance for the purpose of extending the provisions governing the issuance of citations for certain neighborhood nuisances to include various types of unruly social events, specifying the responsibilities of owners, operators, tenants, and occupants of and persons with possessory interests and any premises to prevent use of those premises for neighborhood nuisances and unruly social events, prohibiting these persons from conducting, causing, permitting, aiding, and condoning neighborhood nuisances and unruly social events on the premises, providing for civil liability of the parent and legal guardians of juveniles who violate this prohibition, repealing criminal penalties for violations, and providing for enforcement by civil citations, defining certain terms, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to the civil enforcement of certain activities involving conduct that disturbs the quiet enjoyment by others of private and public property or that includes underage consumption of alcoholic beverages. Sponsored Clark, Henry, Middleton, Costello, Scott Craft, President Young, Stokes, Welsh, Riceinger, Specter.
Chair, please note that Councilman Mosby is a co-sponsor. Councilman Curran, Councilman Holton, Councilman Branch as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Mr. President, members of the council, thank you for your support by cosponsorship of this legislation. This is legislation to expedite the citations for nuisance houses when they are private residences in which some kind of party or occasion begins to impact negatively on public areas and on the public peace and well-being. Basically, it provides for the immediate issuance of citations of $500 for disturbing the peace to not only persons running the party, but also to people who happen to have ownership of that property if they are renting it out. It also provides that if these are juveniles under the age of 18 who are responsible for the party, that their parents and guardians are likewise responsible, as responsible as they are for the disturbance of the peace, unruly crowds coming out of the property onto the public right-of-way, and basically making more noise and causing more problems in the public right-of-way than the neighbors can tolerate. So thank you for your cosponsorship. Basically, now, this is a long-drawn-out process involving the Police Department, the Housing Department, and this just says, write a ticket, hand it out, we'll mail it to people that are responsible who aren't present, and if a landlord says he's not responsible, then he has to prove it by demonstrating that eviction proceedings are underway. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This has been assigned to Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0541, Flavored Tobacco, No Distribution Within 500 Feet of Schools. Ordinance for the purpose of prohibiting the distribution of flavored tobacco products within 500 feet of any elementary, middle, or secondary school, defining and redefining certain terms, setting certain penalties, clarifying conforming related provisions, and generally relating to flavored tobacco products. Sponsored Holton, Henry, Middleton, Costello, Scott, Craft, Welsh, Clark, Riceinger, Specter.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Holton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to begin with thanking my colleagues for signing on to this bill. It is, tobacco is serious business in causing harm to our young people. As Dr. Wynn said when I first approached her about it, that this is a public health issue that we should take on. When you look at, with among the top 13 deaths in Baltimore City, tobacco is attributable to every one of them with the exception of homicide. So it really is a matter of what we do, and I'm grateful to my colleague from the 6th District who did put forth legislation to look at the advertising that goes on, attracting young people to consider menthol products, fruit-flavored products, as something cool to do, something fun to do, and enticing them to take on such a terrible habit early on in life. It is not about saying that those of legal age should not indulge in what they feel they want to, but it's about protecting our future, which is our youth. Back in December of 2014, the Washington Business Journal did an article stating that of 30, they did random inspections across the state of retail establishments, and they found that 30% of the retail establishments in the state of Maryland were selling tobacco products to underage minors, thereby breaking the law. And so, putting more measures in place with fines and penalties to ensure that we're not adding to our young people becoming smokers is a good thing. It impacts the ability to learn, the ability to grow and be healthy, and the ability to be viable citizens of our city and of our nation. So I thank my colleagues for cosponsoring this bill and look forward to further educating not just us, but the public on the dangers of fruit-flavored tobacco products.
Please note that Councilman Mosby is a co-sponsor. You're a co-sponsor. Councilman Curran is a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Curran. Councilman Branch is a co-sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the sponsor for putting this legislation in. There's been a lot of talk recent weeks about the homicide rate in Baltimore, and then a few weeks ago about the heroin overdose in Baltimore and the state of Maryland, but it's good to report to this body that the mortality rate for lung cancer and tobacco-related heart illnesses, the mortality rate of the last five years is on the way down due to the courage of the lead sponsor and others in this body seven years ago to pass the Clean Indoor Air Act. And the bottom line, Mr. President, is the layering effect of prohibitions against tobacco, people eventually quit, and it's a good thing. I just wish it was 5,000 feet instead of 500 feet, but we're going to give this good hearing in the summer, and it will be open, this bill will pass before the end of the summer, before school opens in September. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Health Committee. Resolution to be introduced.
City Council Resolution 15-0229R, Employee Listening Hearing, Department of Public Works. Resolution for the purpose of inviting policymakers from the Department of Public Works to join council members for a hearing to provide an opportunity for direct, unfiltered communication from ground-level DPW employees. Sponsored Branch, Henry, Middleton, Costello, Craft, Welsh, Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman Branch.
Thank you, Mr. President. During the budget hearing, sort of had a discussion with the Director of Public Works in reference to situations that were going on within Public Works, well, more so generally solid ways. I was a 24, 25-year employee for the city of Baltimore before I became an elected official, and I've learned, especially by going through many of the agencies now, that many times the ground troop, ideas is not really heard from people in the upper level. They're usually blocked as they're trying to go up. I had the opportunity of speaking with an employee with the Water Department who just retired after 30-something years, and she was a real good employee, hard-working employee, and yet, when it came to getting past the level of Officer Assistant III, she was blocked from being promoted anywhere. And when she tried to reach out, it would only go as far as certain levels before they would get blocked. Many times, the bureau heads wouldn't hear from what's going on. My knowledge, I've always found that many times, people from the upper level really don't hear what's going on in the lower level, as I was speaking in the budget hearing. With the trash problem, if they sit down and they listen to the people who's out there doing the work, the people on the upper level, they would get a real clear idea as to what's going on in the streets. We need to listen to our foot soldiers, just like with the Baltimore City Police Department. I think it's excellent the way the Commissioner, he's listening to the foot patrolmen. Hopefully, we can resolve this issue, especially with the unrest. We need to be able to work together in order to get things done, and it's not just happening in the police department. It's happening in practically every, in practically every, yeah, yeah, every entity in the city. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Labor Committee. Huh? Please note that Councilman Curran is a co-sponsor. This has been assigned to the Labor Committee.
City Council Resolution 15-0230R, Approving the Submission of an Application to the Maryland Transit Administration for Transportation Funding Through the Statewide Special Transportation Assistant Program. Resolution for the purpose of approving the submission of an application with the Maryland Transit Administration of the Maryland Department of Transportation for a grant under the Federal Transit Act. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Riceinger.
Mr. President, I move to suspend rules for media adoption.
Seconded by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of suspending rules for media adoption of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The most encouraged rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Vice President Riceinger.
I move the resolution favorable.
Seconded by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of adopting this resolution, 15-0230R, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged this resolution is adopted.
City Council Resolution 15-0231R, Informational Hearing, Community Policing, Officer Friendly. Resolution for the purpose of inviting the Police Commissioner, the Youth Commission, and community leaders from across Baltimore City to appear before the council to discuss the process of improving the relationship between the Police Department and the youth of Baltimore, and to explore reinvigorating the officer-friendly program. Sponsored President Young, Henry, Middleton, Costello, Scott, Craft, Stokes, Clark, Riceinger, Specter, Welsh.
Thank you. Please note Councilman Mosby as a co-sponsor, Councilman Branch as a co-sponsor, Councilman Curran, Councilwoman Holton as a co-sponsor. Thank all my co-sponsors. Our community policing will help repair the fractured relationship between the police officer and the community. Officer-friendly is an initiative within community policing. Officer-friendly calls for police officers to teach useful safety lessons to youth in the classroom. This engagement helps to build a relationship between the youth and the police, and helps to eliminate intimidation and dislike between the police and the youth. In community policing, police officers also work in the same areas day after day and help to organize and participate in social, educational, and athletic events for the community. Officer-friendly faded away in the 1980s because of the populist shift towards the zero tolerance policy, and this is another way for officer-friendly to really reemerge so that our youth will not be afraid of the police and will not look at the police as being us against them, but another way to engage our youth with the Police Department so that they can understand that not all of our police officers are the road police officers, like the small amount of police officers that are tainting the whole department. So this is another way to make sure that our police officers know who our community are and know who the parents are, so that when things happen in the community, instead of the lock them up mentality, is, you know, they can talk to our youth and better engage them instead of just locking them up. So I want to thank all my co-sponsors, and this has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee, and I hope that we can have a speedy hearing on this resolution. Thank you.
City Council Resolution 15-0232R, Teaching Nonviolent Conflict Resolution in City Schools. Resolution for the purpose of calling on Baltimore City Public Schools to take steps to systematically integrate lessons in nonviolent conflict resolution into K-12 curriculum to help provide our children with the conflict resolution skills they will need to succeed in life. Sponsored Welsh, Henry, Middleton, Costello, Scott, Craft, President Young, Stokes, Clark, Riceinger, Specter.
Please note Councilman Branch, Councilman Mosby, Councilman Curran as co-sponsors. Chair recognizes Councilman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And Councilwoman Holton.
Conflict is an inevitable part of living in any society, but how to handle it is a skill that must be taught and practiced like any other in order to be mastered. Children are not knowing how to resolve conflict, and unfortunately, they would, the world we live in would often provide more poor examples of how to handle conflict than positive ones. This leaves too many children without a real chance to develop the conflict resolution tools that they need. Mr. President, I was involved with a young man in my district who was nine years old trying to play with his friends in the street who was shot twice in his leg. I accompanied him to the emergency room, watched them take one bullet out of his leg. They couldn't take the other one out because it was large near his knee, and I heard him talk about the barbecue that he wanted to go to and the fact that he couldn't play baseball or football anymore. We need to do something different. In the long term, we talk about building buildings and developing communities, but before we build any of those buildings, we have to build people. That's why I'm requesting that from grades K through 12 that we have conflict resolution as part of the curriculum, not a program, but a step up in what we provide in terms of curriculum, something that's taught every day, something that moves forward every year there in school, so that these children will not be victims in the future or collateral damage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Education and Youth Committee.
City Council Resolution 15-0233R, Allocating Federal Criminal Seizure Funds for Police Fans and Body Cameras. Resolution for the purpose of calling on the Police Department and the Department of Finance to take steps to immediately direct federal criminal seizure funds or other quickly available funds towards accelerating the Baltimore City Police Department's deployment of cameras and all police fans and body cameras for all appropriate officers. Sponsored Mosby, Henry, Middleton, Costello, Scott, Craft, Stokes, President Young, Welsh, Riceinger, Specter.
Please note Councilman Branch as a co-sponsor, Councilwoman Clark as a co-sponsor. Any more co-sponsors? Chair recognizes Councilman Mosby.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. It's no secret, the current state that not only our city's in, but the entire country's in, as it relates to protecting our citizens as well as protecting our officers. You know, at this point, when we talk about body cameras and the importance of body cameras, we've seen through footage, time and time again, that it provides additional detail into actually what's going on in our communities and in our streets on a daily basis. As it relates to body cameras, we also know that from a federal, state, and local municipality perspective all throughout this country, studies and pilots have been done on these cameras. I know that this council passed a bill a few months ago allowing body cameras to be worn by Baltimore City Police Officers, and the administration took a different approach in saying that they wanted to do a pilot. At this point, a pilot is too slow. A pilot does not provide the citizens nor the Police Department what they need. A pilot is not the right decision. We can't afford for another incident or another event to plague out in our city without providing folks the transparency of knowing exactly what's going on. At the end of the day, from a constitutional perspective, from a privacy perspective, from a storage perspective, this particular issue has been discussed, has been analyzed, has been vetted out time and time again throughout this entire country, and for us to drag our feet for this just does not make any sense. When we look at it from a financial perspective, the finances tell us that we cannot wait. Paying $11 million over the past six years for civil lawsuits associated with this issue as it relates to some of the trauma that takes place in our communities, as it relates to the disconnect between our communities and our police as they fight to develop new tactics for community policing. Now is the time, it's no time to wait. It's critically important that we develop a solution. I'm calling on the Director of Finance, as well as the Police Department, and any other city agency that's a stakeholder in this, to do its yeoman's job of ensuring that we get to body cameras as soon as possible. Again, there's no time to wait. Thank you for my co-sponsors.
Thank you. Please note that Councilman Curran and Councilwoman Holton are co-sponsors. Chair recognizes Councilman, I got Branch. Chair recognizes Councilman Craft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I would like to follow up on the resolution that has been introduced by my colleague from the 7th District. During last week, we spent a considerable amount of time dealing with the city's budget for the coming year. There is approximately, um, over five, a little over $5 million budgeted for body cameras. Uh, on Wednesday evening, we had the Commissioner here, and we asked the Commissioner specifically when we could get the body cameras. We asked him that, uh, in fact, said to him, we believe that it was imperative to get them here as soon as possible. Uh, he had given us a schedule that the RFP would go out in, uh, September, that we would have a contract, I mean, uh, the RFP would go out in July, we'd have a contract in September, and the pilot program would be ready to move forward in December. Uh, we said that that was totally unacceptable, and asked him where the project stood, and he said, "Look, they had done everything that they were supposed to do." That is the Baltimore Police Department, and they had turned it over to the Bureau of Purchases. So, on Friday morning, we had the folks from purchases in here, and we spoke with them in considerable detail about, um, their process. Um, and a number of our colleagues talked with them about that process for a considerable amount of time on Friday morning. And, um, to summarize it as briefly as I can, and please feel free if, if those of you who are here, if you want to add to it, but basically what they said is, um, one, they don't have all the information right now, and, you know, Commissioner may have thought that he gave it to them, they don't have it all. At some point, it's not there, but they need more information to issue the RFP. We specifically asked them, "Do you need more people? Do you need more help? Do you need more money in order to get it done?" And they basically said, "No, we have the people, we just have to go through these steps." Um, and it's many steps. It's not just, according to them, it's just not deciding what camera it is, but it's also deciding what software to use, how to retain the images, what type of images to use. But more importantly, because of the nature of the pilot program that they say or they are going to implement, they are talking about getting two to four different vendors, and using two to four different vendors for a period of time before they decide which of those vendors is the one that they are actually going to use.
Um, this has been held.
This is going to delay this program, it is going to put it out into next year. And, um, while we all believe that it's important, as we learned from the speed camera program, if you're gonna operate, you know, don't build it if you can't operate it, uh, we're back to the same thing. But we've got to make certain that this thing moves quickly, moves efficiently, and that it is effective when it's implemented. And there are people out there that are doing this job now around the country that is providing body cameras. They are, they have the software, they are networking the programs, and they are retaining the data. Uh, the task force spent almost a year working on this. We don't need to reinvent the wheel, we need these folks to move this forward more quickly. And if there is a breakdown between the office of the Commissioner and the office of the Department of Finance, that is procurement, then, you know, we ask the administration to come in and bang their heads together, and get them to be operating on the same page as quickly as possible so that we can get the money that my colleague from the 7th District is saying can be available. Add that to the $5 million that's there, and get those cameras out on people's bodies as soon as possible, and not Christmas. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, this has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee.
City Council Resolution 15 dash 0234R request for state action, keep the Preakness in Baltimore. Resolution for the purpose of calling on the Maryland General Assembly to join Governor Hogan, the 41st delegation of Baltimore City, and the Baltimore City Council in affirming the established policy that recognizes Baltimore City as the only possible home for the historic Preakness State's leg of the Triple Crown, and requesting that they refuse any attempts to change Maryland law to allow the Preakness to be moved outside Baltimore, to be moved out of Baltimore City. Sponsor Specter and President Young.
Chair, please note that Councilman Kern, Councilman Henry, Councilman Mosby, Councilman Costello, Councilman, all council people? All council people, co-sponsor. Chair recognize Councilwoman, uh, Specter.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm gonna wait until my fellow friend.
Is that you, Bobby?
I, I, I really appreciate the support, and I know that this is deja vu for us all over again. The Preakness, the third leg of the triple, the, the middle leg of the Triple Crown is an incredible economic generator. It's a job win for Baltimore City. It's been in Baltimore City for 140 years. When I heard that first whisper about it might leave Baltimore City, it brought back that trauma of the Colts under the cover of darkness leading. Bad enough we lost our football team, but they took the name of Baltimore Colts with them. The Preakness is Baltimore, and I'm, am very, very happy that the governor has shown tremendous support. The Preakness is too important at this time especially, Mr. President, members of the council, to allow such an economic generator, such a benefit to Baltimore, to even think of not being here. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. I don't know what Bobby would do if, if they moved it. I don't know what Bobby would do if they moved it.
Urged me to do this, it's in my district, so he recognized Councilwoman Courtesey. Mr. President, um, I move to supen, oh, I, I wanna move.
Chair recognize Councilman Kern.
Thank you, Mr. President. For one, it's only missed live since 1973 to Preaknesses in person. Um, I really understand what that the celebration means to the city. It's a celebration. Um, it's a tough grind for the horsemen and for the athletes themselves to have to run, uh, the, uh, the horses, but it is a celebration that really is Baltimore, Baltimore's all about. Um, I believe that the intention is not to move the Preakness to another facility in the state. Unfortunately, I believe the intention is to move it to a, um, Harrondale, Florida, where there's another venue for horse racing. Uh, that's only my belief, I could be wrong. Um, I hope that the Preakness will stay, even as, if it is a limited meet, three weeks culminating in the Preakness, because the real impact is the several days before the Preakness and the Preakness itself. Um, so, I'm proud that the sponsor from the 5th District is doing this. Um, this is a great economic generator for this town. I'm glad that the, uh, the situation, the civil unrest did not disturb, uh, the Preakness this year. That would have been very tragic to have 80 to 100,000 people come in from around the, you know, the country, around the world, to come to this event. So, I appreciate the sponsor taking the lead on this. I'm glad to be a co-sponsor.
Chair, Chair recognize Councilwoman Specter.
I, I really understand, uh, as much that everybody feels the same way as I do. And the most important thing is that we do need the state to cooperate in every which way, whether it be the legislation that we need to be tightened up, or whether we identify it as intellectual property. But if the priest, Preakness leaves here, it would be a tremendous loss because it is one of those legs of the Triple Crown. It must, it must play for Triple Crown, and that's why it's so valuable to the owner of the racetrack right now. So, we have been so cooperative, Mr. President, members of the council. We have a PUD, the community cooperates with whatever they need. We work together with the owners of the racetrack. We have pledged to own, to, uh, cooperate with them as well as the state legislators do. So, uh, for, in that vein, because we want to get to work on it right away with important legislation that might need to be drafted, I move to suspend the appropriate rules so the council can immediately adopt this, uh, resolution.
Second by Councilwoman, um, Holton, all those in favor of suspending rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. The most encouraged rules are suspended. Chair recognize Councilwoman Specter.
I move the resolution favorable, favorably.
Second by Councilwoman Holton, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 15 dash 0234R, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The most encouraged resolution is adopted.
Stay tuned and hold your horses.
Uh, Chair recognize, uh, Councilman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to suspend the appropriate rules so that I can introduce the City Council Resolution from the floor.
Second by Councilman Kern, all those in favor of suspended rules allow for the introduction of this City Council Resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The most encouraged rules are suspended, and the resolution can be introduced and will be. City Council Resolution 15 dash 0235R.
City Council Resolution 15 dash 0235R trauma counseling for children affected by violence. Resolution for the purpose of calling on the mayor and the CEO of Baltimore City Public Schools to act to ensure that, that all of Baltimore's children who have been affected by the recent violence have access to trauma counseling to help them move past this difficult time in their lives. Sponsor Welsh.
Chair recognize Councilman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. President. This also is personal to me. There was a man who came to my office, wanted to become engaged in urban farming, and he shared his life story with me, and I want to share it with you. I'm, I'm gonna use a fictitious name. Let's call him Dan. When Dan was seven years old, he went to a laundromat on Edmondson near Calhoun Street with his mom's laundry. He had his little four-year-old brother with him. And while he was there, two men came into the laundromat and demanded money from the laundromat attendant. The laundromat attendant told him, "No." The two men immediately emptied both of their guns into the laundromat attendant. They then came to him and asked him for his money. And he is an older gentleman, and in those days, when you said it's your mama's money, they basically respected it, and that's what he told him, so they left him alone. But in order for him to exit the laundromat, he had to climb over the equipment, and he carried his little brother with him because there was just so much blood. Now, exit that laundromat, and 15 years later, you see the most heinous killer that Baltimore has ever seen. He made up his mind that he wouldn't become a victim, and the way he didn't become a victim was to become very violent. He was given so many life sentences, we never thought we'd ever see him on the streets of Baltimore, but because of a technicality, he got out of jail, he turned his life around, he became a very productive citizen. But we don't see that every day. And every time a child sees violence, they're affected by it. They don't have to participate in it, they just see it, and it, it affects them in terms of their worth, their self-esteem, and their ability to move forward. So, when I talked about collateral damage earlier, I'm looking 15 years out. Without counseling, you don't know what the outcomes are gonna be with these children, how they're gonna react or respond in society. And with it, you can get a gauge on where a child is. It can help them learn better, it can help them be more productive, and they need to relate to each other in different ways. So, I, I just feel that every child in Baltimore City who's in an environment that, that sheds violence every day needs to have this available to them so they can move forward with their lives. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, any co-sponsors? Uh, please note that, uh, Councilman Henry is a co-sponsor. Councilman Mosby, Councilman Scott. Any more, Council, Councilwoman Middleton, Councilman, um, Vice President Ryssinger, Holton, Costello, Branch, uh, Clark, Kraft, Kern, Specter, Stokes, all council members. Uh, this has been assigned to Education and Youth Committee. Uh, you can find the consent counter in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent counter? Motion by Councilman Kern, second by, uh, Councilman Mosby. All those in favor of approving the consent counter, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Most encouraged this counter is approved. Uh, Chair recognize Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to extend floor privileges to my special guest, the 2015 baseball city champions, Digital Harbor High School Rams.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of extending floor privileges to Councilman Costello's guests, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The most encouraged, your guest may take the floor.
Mr. President, as you know, you were at the game with me along with Councilman Scott on May 9th when Digital Harbor beat the Academy for Career and College Exploration 16 to 7. 16 to 9, well, let's call it 7, doesn't matter. Um, we have some resolutions that we'd like to present to the team. Uh, one set is for myself, and the other set is from Council President Young, which, uh, Councilman Scott will be presenting. I'll read the first one. The City Council of Baltimore Resolution, uh, in recognition, and I'm gonna read off the names at the end, in recognition of your role in Digital Harbor High's victory in the 2015 Baltimore City Division One Baseball Championship at the Camden Cup. Councilman Scott.
Y'all turn around and look that way so they can see you.
Uh, the players are Shamar Baker. Woo! Darius Brooks. Robert Carroll. Christopher Day. Eric Exum. Jamar Griffin. Team manager Troy Johnson. Khalid Jones. Harrison Larkins. Lamar Newton. Edward Robinson. Kevin Thomas. Kevin Villanueva. Unable to make it today were Tyler Montley and Montreal Pogue. Coach Tom Fortman. And, uh, unable to make it were, uh, coaches Dave Verdi, who was named the Administrator of the Year at Digital Harbor yesterday at their graduation. I was there. And coffee, Steve Ren. They, they beat the Academy for Career and College Exploration 16-9.
And while they're taking, um, the picture, um, while they're taking the picture, I just want to, uh, congratulate, um, I would like to just congratulate them, um, on their win. Um, Digital Harbor, as most people know, is the old southern high school where Al Kaline, um, played for the Short Tigers, and finally made it into the Hall of Fame as a Baltimore native. So, um, they have a rich history there at Digital Harbor. So, we're looking for the next professional player to come out of Digital Harbor. Um, it's an excellent program there at Digital Harbor, and they came real close one year in the President's Cup. If it wasn't for a bad call by an ump, um, of a call at first base, that's true. Um, they would have been in the playoff down at Camden Yards. I was really upset about that, but I had to remember that it was the President's Cup, and I couldn't be biased in no kind of way. But when I saw that bad call, I was really upset about that. But congratulations to you all, keep up the good work. Just, you know, just pass them out. The coach can give them out to him. Thank you all. Congratulations again, guys. Thank you. Uh, Chair recognize, uh, Councilman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to extend floor privileges to my special guest.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to extend floor privileges to my special guest.
Seconded by Council Vice President Rossinger. All those in favor of extending floor privileges to Councilman Welsh's guests say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most encourage, your guest may take the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to bring on the members of the Franklin Square Middle School Baltimore City Lacrosse Champions. Thank you, Mr. President. My daughter's a lacrosse player, and I knew that I wouldn't be paying tuition, because in her junior year playing lacrosse, they sent scouts illegally to watch her play. And I would shoot on my daughter with bocce balls, big, heavy bocce balls, and she'd knock them down and catch them. And I was, I knew that I was, and she didn't play in her junior year. She decided she didn't want to play anymore. But I recognize all of the talent and skill that it takes to play lacrosse, and the stamina that it takes, running up and down the field with that stick, trying to get that little ball. It's tough stuff. So I recognize the time that it took for you to become champions in your sport, and I want to present you with a City Council Resolution to recognize all of the hard work and the success you had with that hard work. Gentlemen, if you will...
I'd love to have a player resolution. Is that a player resolution?
No.
These are players.
We have individual resolutions.
That's what I want. Yeah, that's a player.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Let me pick one in the middle, just randomly, okay?
Okay.
There we go. I'll just grab one.
Kyrie McDonald. Come on up here. I'm going to read the first one to you. The City Council of Baltimore Resolution, be hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Kyrie McDonald, goalkeeper. You played the same position my daughter played. In recognition of Baltimore City Middle School Lacrosse League Championship Franklin Square Lacrosse Team, the entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion, and directs this resolution be presented on this 19th day of June 2015 by our Council President Bernard C. Jack Young, me, Councilman William Pete Welch, and all the members of the Baltimore City Council. Kyrie, congratulations. I have resolutions for each and every member of the team. I will give them to you after the council meeting. If the council president would, we'd like to take a picture with our council president. God bless and keep you, and have a successful season next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for floor privileges to bring guests onto the floor this evening.
Is it second? Okay. Your guests may take the floor.
Okay. I'd ask for the presidents of Baltimore Alumni Chapter and Baltimore Metropolitan Chapter, as well as chairs of the Social Action Committee to come forth, and I'd like for Councilwoman Middleton and Councilman Mosby to come forth, because these two chapters of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority do programming in the 6th District as well as the 7th District with the Metro Delta Head Start that's in Reservoir Hill and the Baltimore Alumni Chapter's property that we own and do programming out of. And so, and Council President, if you would come and stand with them, as you spoke to them today, to present them with the resolution, because they've been doing this in City Hall for more than a decade now. And so I want to present the chapters, and I'm just gonna read one of them. The City Council of Baltimore be hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, Baltimore Metropolitan Chapter, and Baltimore Alumni Chapter, in recognition of your continued commitment to social action through Delta Days at City Hall. The entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion, and directs this resolution be presented on this first day of June. Signed, Councilwoman Helen Holton, City Council President C. Bernard Jack Young, and all members.
Mr. President, I ask that we allow floor privileges for my guests.
Seconded by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of extending floor privileges to Councilman Mosby's guests say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most encourage, your guest may take the floor.
We understand and know that Baltimore City created another history in our chapter a few weeks back. It wasn't necessarily the right chapter that we would like to write, but it was a defining moment for the city. As the unproductive unrest took place, Baltimore City, its residents, its neighbors, its friends, its business owners showed an amazing amount of resiliency to let folks know it wasn't about the corner of North and Mount, it wasn't about the 7th District, it wasn't about West Baltimore. For that right, it wasn't even about the city of Baltimore, but it was about us all coming together. So if we move forward...
Yeah, could everybody come around so that the TV can see all of you?
So this is just a subset of the folks that helped contribute to that resiliency, and telling folks to say that we would rebuild, we would be there for our community in all different types of shapes and capacities. I'm gonna read off all the names and exactly what they did to help our office out during this trying time. But again, this is a subset of folks. I mean, we had folks reach out from Alaska, folks reach out from all across this entire country, providing us with donations and everything as we went and woke up that morning. So just to read off the list, I have Jenny Morgan from Baltimore Green Works. She helped distribute box lunches to senior centers, community members in schools in the 7th District. Jody Kilman from Whole Foods in Mount Washington donated box lunches and more, and that were disseminated throughout West Baltimore. Derek Purcell, Aramark Dining Services made hot meals for seniors at Penn and North. Christina Mayo, Visionary and Change LLC made hot meals for seniors at the senior center on Penn and North. Frederick Hicks of Nuvo Soul Experience made hot meals for seniors at the same senior center. Overseer C. Guy Robinson and Jeremy Simmons of Tabernacle of Lord Church and Ministries currently accepting donations and distribution throughout West Baltimore. Kerry Hickey, Coppin State University gathered volunteers to transport seniors to and from pharmacies. Roscoe Johnson and Anthony Presley from Druid Heights Community Development Corporation, they held a place for us to stage all the donations that we received. John Kemp from Royal Farms donated bags, over 1,000 bags for us to help pass out some of the toiletries and items that we received. Paul Makovich from Giant Food Store Manager on 41st Street donated bags as well. Michael Balderson and Roderick Best from Shoppers of Mondom and Mall donated bags and donations as well. Lakeisha Greenwald from Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated collected donations and helped sort. Zeta Phi Beta Sorority collected donations and helped sort and distribute at Gilmore Homes. Delta Sigma Theta collected donations and helped sort the items we collected, as well as Eastern Stars, who helped collect donations and helped sort distribution as well. And last but not least, the Masonic Lodge helped collect donations and helped us sort at Druid Heights. Again, this is a small subset, but it shows the diversity and resiliency of our city coming together during a time of crisis. The one thing that I learned is to be prepared for a crisis. That doesn't just happen at the second after the crisis, but it happens well in advance of it, and these folks step right in to help out. The one thing that I've taken to heart is a quote by the mayor of Chicago, and he said that you cannot waste a crisis, and that's what these folks did not do. They came from all different walks of life. They said at the end of the day, this situation is our situation, these residents are our residents, and we must come together and forever band to help change them. So today, we present you City Council Resolutions. I'm not gonna read all of them. Candace will pass them all out in the hallway in the back. And it reads, the City Council of Baltimore Resolution, be hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to, in recognition of your commitment, service, and civic action for the citizens of West Baltimore and the 7th District. This entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion, and directs this resolution to be presented on this first day of June 2015. Signed, President Bernard C. Jack Young, and myself, Councilman Nick J. Mosby, Councilman for the 7th District. Thank you so much.
I think we can, I think, I think we can stand up for that. I'm trying to get this mic. Everybody couldn't hear me on that. I want to thank all of you for the great work that you've done in a moment when people were really hurting. I want to thank Councilman Nick Mosby for spearheading and making sure that his district was taken care of. Again, thank you. Hey, Robert Guy Robinson, thank you, my good friend. Councilman Henry?
Move short titles for the remainder of the meeting.
Seconded by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of short title for the remainder of the hearing, say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion encourage short titles for the remaining of the hearing. We'll now move the bills on second reader. Executive Report Miss Committee.
EA 15-0284, Michael Furbish, Member, Commission on Sustainability.
Chair recognizes Councilman Welsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held a hearing on Wednesday, May 20th, 2015. We heard Council Bill 15-0284, Michael Furbish.
You move for a favorable report?
Oh, we have favorable report.
Okay. Seconded by Councilwoman Specter. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. All opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 15-0285, Avis Ransom, Member, Commission on Sustainability, 3rd District.
Yeah, move the nomination favorable.
Seconded by Councilman Kern. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 15-0286, Inez Robb, Member, Commission on Sustainability, 9th District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Welsh.
I move the nomination favorable.
Seconded by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. All opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 15-0287, Mary Denise Davis, Member, Civilian Review Board, 14th District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Welsh.
Move the nomination favorable.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed. Education and Youth Committee.
City Council Resolution 15-0213-R, informational hearing, sugar-free kids.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Members of the City Council, we had a very informative, very informative hearing, thanks to our colleague, Councilman Mosby, who brought the Sugar Free Kids Coalition to City Hall. And it was a most educational experience, and we learned all about sugar drinks. That basically, what really stuck in my mind was the sugar that comes from a drink, like a soda, or even energy drinks that athletes use, somehow has a more fattening effect than sugar that comes from food. And that's, the drinks are what our children use, you know, take in more often than anything else, because it's easier and it's handy. So, we learned a lot. We have some work to do, working with the school system and working with our partners in health and education. We will pursue this and work with our colleague to try to reduce the number of children, literally, who are overweight at a very early age. So I'd like to move approval of the resolution, if I could have a second, please.
Seconded by Councilman Mosby. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 15-0213-R, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion encourage this resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
Housing and Community Development.
City Council Bill 14-0459, City Streets Closing Certain Alleyies in an Area Bounded by West 29th Street, Fox Street, West 28th Street, and Huntington Avenue.
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill and the one after it were both heard earlier this spring. They facilitate additional parking in the Remington neighborhood, and I would like to move this one favorable with no amendments.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion encourage this bill is approved, and this bill moves the third reader.
City Council Bill 14-0460, City Streets Opening Certain Alleyies in an Area Bounded by West 29th Street, Fox Street, West 28th Street, and Huntington Avenue.
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves the third reader.
Thank you.
Judiciary and Legislative Investigations.
City Council Bill 15-0489, Public Ethics Law, Prohibited Gifts, duplicative exemptions.
Chair recognizes Councilman Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this bill and the three bills after it were all heard on Tuesday, May 19th. They all deal with various amendments to the public ethics law. I move this bill favorably.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This motion is approved. This bill moves the third reader.
City Council Bill 15-0499, Public Ethics Law, Prohibited Gifts, Closing Gaps.
Chair recognizes Councilman Kraft.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorably.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves the third reader.
City Council Bill 15-0500, Public Ethics Law, Prohibited Interest Clarifications.
Chair recognizes Councilman Kraft.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorably.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approve this bill moves the third reader.
City Council Bill 15-0501, Public Ethics Law, Financial Disclosure, Repeal of Pointless Exception.
Chair recognizes Councilman Kraft.
Mr. President, there are amendments to this bill. They are on the members' desk. I move the amendments this time.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving the amendments, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. Amendments are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Kraft.
I move the bill favorably as amended.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving the amendments, say All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill fifteen dash zero four seven six, zoning condition to use conversion of a one-family dwelling unit to a two-family dwelling unit in the R seven zoning district, twenty-five fifteen Brookfield Avenue.
Chair recognized, Vice President Ross Singer.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Mosby. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. The finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognized, Vice President Ross Singer.
Mr. President, there's no amendments to this bill. I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Mosby. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill fifteen dash zero four seven eight, rezoning, eight oh one through eight oh nine, Eastern Avenue.
Chair recognized, Vice President Ross Singer.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Kraft. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. The finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognized, Vice President Ross Singer.
There's no amendments to this bill. I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Kraft. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill fifteen dash zero four nine six, zoning condition to use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a two-family dwelling unit in the R eight zoning district, variance thirteen oh one North Broadway.
Chair recognized, Council Vice President Ross Singer.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Kraft. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. The finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognized, Vice President Ross Singer.
Mr. President, there's amendments to this bill. It's on my colleagues' table. I move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Kraft. All those in favor of approving the amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. The amendments are adopted. Chair recognized, Vice President Ross Singer.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilman Kraft. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill fifteen dash zero five zero five, rezoning, fifty-six oh one, Eastern Avenue.
Chair recognized, Council Vice President Ross Singer.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Kraft. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. The finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognized, Vice President Ross Singer.
Mr. President, there's no amendments to this bill. I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Kraft. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill fifteen dash zero five zero six, plant unit development designation, fifty-six oh one, Eastern Avenue.
Chair recognized, Council Vice President Ross Singer.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Kraft. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. The finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognized, Vice President Ross Singer.
Mr. President, there's amendments to this bill. They're on my colleagues' desk. I move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Kraft. All those in favor of approving the amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. The amendments are adopted. Chair recognized, Council Vice President Ross Singer.
I approve the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilman Kraft. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Public Safety Committee.
City Council Resolution fifteen dash zero two zero eight, R, informational hearing, I pledge.
Chair recognized, Councilman Branch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move this bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Scott. All in favor of adopting Resolution fifteen dash oh two oh eight R, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion to encourage this resolution is adopted. Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill fourteen dash zero four three zero, sale of property, thirty-three fourteen through thirty-three nineteen through thirty-four eighteen Ardeau Avenue. President Young, Kraft, Scott.
No, no, no. Read it over.
City Council Bill fourteen dash zero four three zero, sale of property, thirty-three fourteen through thirty-three eighteen Ardeau Avenue. President Kraft, President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Spector, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Walsh, Ross Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill fourteen dash zero four three seven, City Streets, closing a portion of Old Hawkins Point Road between Curtis Creek and Pennington Avenue. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Spector, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Walsh, Ross Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill fourteen dash zero four three eight, sale of property, former bed of a portion of Old Hawkins Point Road between Curtis Creek and Pennington Avenue. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Spector, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Walsh, Ross Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill fourteen dash zero four five two, sale of property, seventeen, nineteen, and twenty-three South Gay Street. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Spector, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Walsh, Ross Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill fourteen dash zero four six one, sale of property, former beds of a three-foot alley and a four-foot alley bounded by West Twenty-Ninth Street, Fox Street, West Twenty-Eighth Street, and Huntington Avenue.
Chair recognized, Councilman Stokes.
Mr. President, I move to hold this particular bill until the June eighth, City Council.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of holding this bill until the June eighth council meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion passes. This bill will be on third reader at the June eighth City Council meeting.
City Council Bill fifteen dash zero four seven three, rezoning, thirty-one through thirty-five North Fulton Avenue. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Spector, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Walsh, Ross Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill fifteen dash zero four seven five, drug paraphernalia and smoking aids commercial displayed to minors. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Spector, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Welsh, Ross Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
Clark is not in the seat. Read it over. She's not in the seat.
President Young, Kraft, President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Spector, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Welsh, Ross Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill fifteen dash zero four eight two, zoning condition to use conversion of a two-family dwelling unit to a three-family dwelling unit in the R seven zoning district, thirty-four twenty-five through thirty-four twenty-seven Caswick Road. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Spector, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Welsh, Ross Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. Chair recognized, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have to announce voting sessions for several bills, beginning on Thursday, June fourth, ten a.m. here in chambers. Taxation, Finance, Economic Development, on Bill fifteen dash zero five two one, the Poppleton Development District, we will hold a voting session. On Council Bill fifteen dash zero five two two, same day, Thursday, June fourth, ten oh five a.m., on the Poppleton Special Obligation Bonds, we will hold a voting session. Same morning, Thursday, June fourth, ten ten a.m. here in chambers, Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development will hold a voting session on the Poppleton Special Taxing District. Let's see. Also, Mr. President, I have a few other bills I need to announce. First, I move for suspension of rules ten dash two.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of suspended rules, announce a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to encourage, Chair recognized, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Taxation, Finance, Economic Development will hear Council Bill fifteen dash two two six R, which is a resolution on community economic development in struggling neighborhoods. That will be June twenty-fourth at five p.m. here in chambers. Also, on this Thursday, ten fifteen a.m. here in chambers, we will be reconvening the hearing on City Council Bill fifteen dash zero five one four, and immediately having a voting session after the reconvening on the fire and police employees retirement system benefit payments. And finally, Mr. President, the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development will hear City Council Bill fifteen dash zero two one nine R on six nine fifteen at two p.m. here in council chambers, an informational hearing on changes to the City of Baltimore Deferred Compensation Plan. Thank you.
Committee announcements over here. Chair recognized, Councilwoman Holton. Oh, Chair recognized, Councilman Henry.
Could the chair repeat? What was the time for that last hearing, the deferred compensation? Two p.m.? Okay. All right, thank you.
Is that okay?
Right. We don't care. I don't care.
Okay.
We don't care.
You're chairing it, Councilman Stokes? Are you chairing it? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to announce a voting session of the Budget and Appropriations Committee on Tuesday, June ninth, at three p.m. here in council chambers for City Council Bill fifteen five thirty-two, ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty sixteen. City Council Bill fifteen five thirty-three, annual property tax fiscal year twenty sixteen. City Council Bill fifteen five thirty-four, operating budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty sixteen. And I also want to remind those here in the chambers and listening audience at home that next Monday following City Council meeting will be taxpayer night here in the council chambers. Immediately following council meeting, we assume somewhere between six and six thirty p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee announcement. Chair recognized, Council Vice President Ross Singer.
Mr. President, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a work session on Bill twelve dash zero one five two, transform Baltimore, Appendix A. It's the end of the tables on Wednesday, June the tenth, at two p.m. in the council chambers. The committee will also hold a hearing on Bill fifteen dash zero five zero eight on Wednesday, July eighth, at one ten p.m. in the council chambers. This is a zoning. It's a conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a two-family dwelling unit in the R eight zoning district. It's a variance located at eighteen oh six West Baltimore Street. The committee will also have a hearing on Bill fifteen dash zero five zero seven on Wednesday, July the eighth, at one p.m. in the council chambers. This is a zoning. It's a conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a two-family dwelling unit in the R eight zoning district variance located at nineteen twelve West Baltimore Street. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognized, Councilwoman Clark.
Thanks, Mr. President, members of the council. I've already announced this hearing. I'm announcing it again. The Education and Youth Committee will hold a hearing this coming Thursday, June fourth, at four p.m. here in these council chambers or the Reeves Room, depending on how many people come. If it's a smaller group, we'll sit around a table in the Reeves. This is a meeting that I've called for the purpose of asking my council colleagues and the public, people who choose to attend, to begin to propose what we need to do in terms of programs, what we need to do in terms of commitments and investments in the long term for our youth, for the young people of Baltimore City. We know we don't do enough. We know we need to do more, but we can't do everything, so we need to begin to talk about what is needed. I plan to make sure that young people, I'll go to young people, and if they can't come to us, to be heard in this, in this beginning of several hearings on what it is the young people want and need, so that they have the opportunities they deserve in our city, from one end of the city to the other. So, hope you will come. My colleague this evening from the Ninth District has already submitted a couple of long-term ideas of great consequence. That's the kind of thing we're looking for. Not everything can be done, but we need to know what people think is important for our young people in order for us to be able to put an agenda together for youth, for Baltimore City, for the future. Thank you very much.
Committee announcement. Chair recognized, Councilman Kraft, followed by Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move to suspend the appropriate rules to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of suspended rules, announce a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to encourage, Chair recognized, Councilman Kraft.
The Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will conduct a hearing on Council Bill fifteen oh five four oh, social host regulation, neighborhood nuisances, and unruly social events, on Tuesday, June ninth, two thousand and fifteen, at nine thirty a.m. here in the council chambers. The Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will conduct a hearing on Council Bill fifteen oh five two nine, historical and architectural preservation, fiftieth anniversary reauthorization, on Tuesday, June sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen, at nine thirty a.m. here in the council chambers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Henry. Any more committee announcements?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing and Community Development Committee will meet here in chambers on Thursday, June eleventh, at ten a.m. to hear four bills. City Council Bill fifteen dash zero five one five, City Streets, opening air rights over a portion of a ten-foot alley in the rear of four thirty-five through four thirty-nine East Lafayette Avenue. City Council Bill fifteen dash zero five one six, City Streets, closing air rights over a portion of a ten-foot alley in the rear of four thirty-five through four thirty-nine East Lafayette Street. City Council Bill fifteen dash zero five one eight, City Streets, opening two ten-foot alleys in the area between Lafayette Avenue, Landville Street, Barkley Street, and Greenmount Avenue. And City Council Bill fifteen dash zero five one nine, City Streets, closing two ten-foot alleys between Lafayette Avenue, Landville Street, Barkley Street, and Greenmount Avenue. The City, I'm sorry, the Housing and Community Development Committee will also meet here in chambers on Thursday, June eighteenth, at two thirty p.m. to hear City Council Bill fifteen dash zero five two eight, Franchise Extranet Systems Incorporated. Thank you.
Any more? Okay. Clearing of the bill status. The list of bills to be cleared can be found on page thirteen of the agenda. Please inform my office in writing of bills that you would like to remain by February, I mean by June the nineteenth. So, on page thirteen of the agenda. If you want your bills to remain, make sure you contact my office by June nineteenth. If not, they will be cleared. Thank you. Regular announcement. Please note that on Monday, June the fifteenth, we will hold a special meeting of the City Council. This special meeting will be held at three p.m. on June the fifteenth. So, that means we will have two council meetings, one at three p.m. and one at five p.m. All right? I'm going to ask for a moment of silence for delegate Cheryl Glenn's husband, Ben Glenn. All of us know Ben, who have passed away suddenly. And we're also going to ask for a moment of silence for Eric Diggs and Daryl Alston. So, those two names. Any regular announcement? Chair recognized, Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, colleagues, I stand, I wish I was standing with all great news, but I have asked the Vice President for a moment of silence for young Kester Brown, who actually lived in Councilman Holton's district but was a student at one of my favorite schools, Baltimore International Academy, and unfortunately had his life taken away along with his mother by some coward who we refuse to get off our streets. We stand today where we have a five hundred and thirty-three percent increase in non-fate shootings for juveniles and young people in our city. That is just simply unacceptable, and if we're going to allow people, well, not even people, we're going to allow trash to murder and shoot our babies, then we all should just pack up and go home. We can no longer continue to cower in our homes and let people shoot innocent women and children. I don't care about you being afraid. I don't care about stop snitching, because one day, it might be you. One day, at this rate, it will be you. You can, we cannot just wait until blood ends up on your doorstep for you to care, because what happens to your neighbor impacts you. What happens in West Baltimore impacts East Baltimore. in West Baltimore impacts East Baltimore. What happens in Locust Point affects Bella Edison. We have to understand that, and for us to truly change our city, we have to understand that and move forward. So, again, I beg information for any homicide that is happening in our town, but when it's a little baby, and Councilwoman Clark and Councilwoman Henry had a dedication for little Mackenzie Elliott, that a year later, we still have not solved this case or closed this case because we know who did it, because adults, grown men, are scared to step up on behalf of a three-year-old baby. And if we're not going to step up when our children are being murdered on the streets, then what are we going to step up for? So... Mr. President, I also stand to remind everyone that tomorrow, the Public Safety Committee will have hearings on two pieces of legislation. 15-0131 is an informational hearing from the Police Commissioner about the new police shift schedule, and 15-0225R is an investigative hearing into police transport vehicles. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry. But before you go, before you say anything, Councilman Scott, you're talking about the nine-year-old and his mom. Did you give her name too, or just his? You don't give him? Okay. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also have to rise for the unhappy occasion of asking for a moment of silence for Ms. Barbara Blackwell, who is a longtime member of the 4th District and longtime former president of the Canalworth Park Community Association passed last week. And so, I would appreciate a moment of silence on her behalf.
Chair recognizes Councilman Craft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, earlier this morning, you joined me along with our colleagues, Councilwoman Clark and Councilman Henry, to release the Radar and Speed Camera Report. I think all of the members have received a copy of it in their mailbox today. I would like to thank everyone who worked on that. I know many of you attended the hearings, the members of the committee, and Councilman Curran, and Councilman Branch, and Councilwoman Specter, I think, who was at every meeting of every hearing, for all of the hard work that was done. This report took a tremendous amount of time to put together. Our investigators reviewed over 37,000 documents. We took testimony from over a dozen witnesses, not including other folks that we interviewed. Those were the witnesses we heard under oath. I'm not going to go through all the recommendations or anything. You all have them. After you've had an opportunity to read three of them, if you have any questions, please feel free to give us a call about them or send us an email. And on a happier note, Mr. President, I'd like to say happy birthday to my mother. Her birthday is on Wednesday. She would not talk to me for the rest of the year if I told you how old she is. So, we'll just say happy birthday, Mom. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we go to Councilwoman Middleton, I forgot to wish my own mother a happy 87th birthday. She's down in Virginia, and every Memorial Day weekend, we go down there. So, thank you for saying happy birthdays to your mom, because I forgot to wish my mom a happy 87th birthday. Her birthday was May 30. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. And also a moment of silence for Norman Ross, which was the founder of the U.B. Blake Cultural Center right there on Howard Street, and also Esther Brown. She was 105 years old.
Thank you. Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. June 1 kicks off LGBT Pride Month, and I just wanted to quickly paraphrase President Obama in that we're reminded that we are not truly equal until every person is afforded the same rights and opportunities, that when one of us faces discrimination, it affects all of us, and our journey is not complete until all of our lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender brothers and sisters are treated equally under the law. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Holton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to acknowledge two women in the 8th District that go above and beyond in serving their communities and were recognized by the mayor's top neighborhood moms for 2015, and that is Marlene Arthur from the West Hills community and Catherine Lester from the Lynnhurst community. These women, for years, have worked tirelessly on behalf of their community associations, putting in countless hours to help bring neighbors together on a monthly basis to address issues and concerns for their communities. I also want to acknowledge North Bend Elementary School, the 4th grade, the only school in Baltimore City that received an award from BGE's Hero Award, where they were tasked with creating this cartoon character around energy, safe energy awareness, and things of that nature. So, kudos to Beachfield Elementary. And then, there were several organizations that received MQ Neighborhood Grant Awards. And I don't know if everyone knows in community that those awards go a long way to helping to bring community together and bridging those things that divide us, but I wanted to acknowledge those communities in the 8th District in particular that received those awards. 100 Black Men of Maryland received one. Hunting Ridge Presbyterian Church for their Strawberry Festival. Irvington Community Association for their annual Back to School Festival. Kensington Improvement Association for their Celebrate Flower Power, and the Village Market, the Village Farmers Market, which its grand opening is this Saturday at the West Side Skill Center parking lot. Another opportunity to bring affordable, fresh produce to the citizens of the 8th District. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Mr. President, members of the council, thank you to this council for helping with Mackenzie Elliott Remembrance Day. Thank you for your contributions. Thank you for standing together with all of us to ask the community to help us raise the reward, which we did. We started out with $2,000, and that has not helped through all these months of seeking witnesses for an arrest and conviction. We now are up to $7,800. So, we set a goal at 5,000. Now, we're setting one at 10. We're going to keep collecting, and thank you for all for getting us thus far, and thanks to the community. It's time, as my colleague has said, and all of us have said, it's time to take care of our children. Taking care of this child who died on her own front porch at 3 years old while the sun was shining with a stray bullet from a drive-through shooter. It is time for justice for Mackenzie Elliott and for all of our children. There is no peace without justice, and it's high time now for the community to come forward and make it influence one another to begin to protect our children by telling us who did the shootings, who took their lives away, so that no other children should have to likewise die. Special thanks to the pastor of Blessed Sacrament Church, Father Joe Muth, who really kept Mackenzie's name in front of his congregations all these months, all the time, and who gave a wonderful, wonderful sermon yesterday at the mass that followed the sign unveiling. And in it, he said that what we can do, what the residents of businesses of Baltimore can do, is build relationships with each other across the city, because, so that we really know each other better. And then, he quoted John Donne, who is famously saying, "Ask not for whom the bell tolls, it tolls for thee." Death diminishes each one of us and the city as a whole, and the death of a baby, a little child, a young child diminishes us more than anything else. Let's make it stop, and let's make this Mackenzie's way, as the sign says, to stop and take care of our children by not taking care of the people who do them harm.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Vice President Ross Singer.
Mr. President, members of the council, the next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, June 8 at 5:00 p.m. in the council chambers. Mr. President, I ask for a moment of silence for Ben Glenn, Eric Diggs, Darrell Austin, Norman Ross, Esther Brown, Barbara Blackwell, Kester Brown, and Jennifer Brown.
Thank you. There being no further business, this concludes the 92nd meeting of the 71st term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.